Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to our 23rd, 2012, regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with our invocation offered by Chaplain Miguel Vidal of the Orlando Police Department. Chaplain Vidal has been with OPD for just a year. He was born in Puerto Rico and raised in Philadelphia. He has a bachelor's degree in theology, a master's in communication, and a doctorate in religious education, as well as an honorary degree in divinity. He has served in the US Army, the US Navy, and the Puerto Rican Army National Guard. He and his wife have been married for 35 years, have two daughters, one grandson, and one on the way. Chaplain Vidal's invocation will be followed today by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Patty Sheehan. Would everybody please rise and bow their heads?
Would you please bow your head with me at this moment? Our dear heavenly Father, we pray that your presence might be in the midst of us this moment that we are gathered in this very place. We thank you for the many abundant blessings for life and for the measure of health needed to fulfill our callings. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing responsibilities. In the scriptures, Father, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, we pray, Father, for the mayor, we pray for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for those that are assembled today, our city council. I pray that you might grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. We pray, Father, that you might give them confidence in what is good and fitting for our people in the city of Orlando, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreements. We also pray for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. Father, we pray for the agenda set before them today, that they may give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved and wonderful city of Orlando. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clark, if you would call the roll or make a determination of a quorum, please.
Commissioner Diamond.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Seward.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lyneum.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clark. First order of business is, let's see, I don't have my agenda, so what meeting minutes are we approving? Consideration minutes from April 9th, 2012 workshop agenda review and city council meeting. Change up there. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Let's move right into awards and presentations, and we have a couple of 30-year service awards. So I'm going to call on Charlie Wade with our solid waste division to present the first one. Oh, actually, he's going to present both of them.
Yes. Afternoon, Mayor, commissioners, and guests. It's my great pleasure to be here today and you allow us the time to recognize two of our solid waste family members for 30 years of service with the city. First, I'd like to recognize Kevin Houlihan. He began his career with the city on April 12th, 1982. He was a welder at the box maintenance team, which was in charge of maintaining the city's inventory of dumpsters. His willingness to lend a hand and further his knowledge in the field made him a great asset to the solid waste team. In no time, he was filling garbage routes and driving trucks. It didn't take Kevin long to work his way up to the box maintenance supervisor. In 96, he was promoted to the section supervisor for logistics, where he manages the box shop operations, serves as head of logistics and supply. His job descriptions changed over the years, but it's one thing that remains the same. You can always count on Kevin. Kevin affectionately known as the Radar O'Reilly. If he needs something to serve his customers, Kevin will get it. In the days and nights after Hurricane Charlie, he spent hours every day driving sandwiches, drinks, to the crews in the field so they could keep working in the cleanup. He also covers the lunch breaks for the dispatches Monday through Thursday so the crews can have radio support, but he does reserve his Fridays for his chicken wings. It's my pleasure to thank Kevin for his 30 years of outstanding service.
Let me lead the certificate of appreciation you receive after 30 years. Kevin D. Houlihan. The mayor of the city of Orlando wishes to convey his expression of grateful commendation and full acknowledgement for the 30 years of service you so valiantly have rendered as an outstanding employee of the city of Orlando. The city council and the citizens of Orlando sincerely appreciate the most faithful and efficient performance of your duties and the best interest of the city of Orlando, dated this 22nd day of April, 2012, signed by Buddy Dyer, Mayor.
And second, I'd like to congratulate George Sonny Weisenbaker for 30 years. Sonny began his long career in the city of April 26th, 1982. Started with a physically demanding job of working on the back of the truck. Sonny began to familiarize himself with the city of Orlando. Eventually, became the voice on the radio, working as a dispatcher and liaison between the drivers and the office staff. Sonny was the lifeline when the truck broke down on the side of the road, and he made sure all the drivers and the supervisors were aware of any of the hot items that needed to be done. It's Sonny's knowledge of the garbage business and work ethic that earned him the promotion to sanitation supervisor. He currently oversees five residential garbage routes and takes the utmost care of his area. Sonny goes the extra mile when his customers need it, and he's been known to stay after his shift to take care of all the customer issues. Most of the commissioners can attest to the personal attention Sonny gives to his customer needs. Example is that he'll go out and personally pick up the garbage for the handicapped customers in his area to make sure that they're taken care of and quietly, they don't have to worry about their garbage. So Sonny's known as the human mapboard, because if it's a street in the city, you ask him, he'll know where it's at. So Sonny, thank you very much for the 30 years. And it's also a pleasure to say that they've both decided that they will stay for a little bit longer, so we'll be around maybe for 35.
Anybody missing glasses? Okay, Marcia, you have the other two.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and city commissioners. It's great to be here today to introduce Pam Cantor, who is the executive director of the Holocaust Center, one of our great partners in many of the community activities that we have, and some members of her board and staff that are here. And she is going to actually give you a brief overview of the Yom HaShoa activities that occurred this month, and then introduce Chelsea Price, one of our creative artist contest winners, who is going to share her writing that she's done that won the award. She'll share some excerpts with you. And Mayor, when they finish, if you would please take a photo with them. Thank you. Pam?
Thank you, Marcia. Throughout the year, the Holocaust Memorial Resource and Education Center teaches over 16,000 students, hundreds of teachers, and thousands of visitors about the horrors of the Holocaust. We confront the question of what happened, how did it happen, how could it happen, and could it happen again? We attempt to fight ignorance with education and against disbelief with proof. It's been over 70 years since the Nazi reign of terror against Jews began. To survivors, the Holocaust remains real and ever-present, but for some of us, 70 years makes the Holocaust seem part of ancient history. Therefore, we reserve one special day each year for the horror or remembrance. Yom HaShoa is when we remember those who suffered, those who fought, and those who died. We remember the 6 million Jews who were murdered and the families that were completely decimated. And we remember those liberators who liberated the lucky few who survived. Each year, the Holocaust Center sponsors a student creative arts contest open to all kindergarten through 12th grade students in central Florida. This year's theme was "One by One: Life Stories from the Holocaust." Students were asked to focus on the life story of an actual person victimized by the Nazis. The best entries focused on a person's entire life, not just their Holocaust experience. It is my honor to introduce Chelsea Price, a sophomore at Freedom High School, who will read a portion of her winning creative writing entry. Chelsea.
Hi, I'm going to read an excerpt, and it's portraying the life of Bessie K., a Jewish Holocaust survivor, and I'll begin as Bessie is pregnant, living in a ghetto. Dear diary, the time it takes to acquire my diary and the strength to write is not worth it. Nothing is worth it. I live every day for my unborn child. I barely have the nutrients for my baby to survive, yet through the torture and the abuse every day I try to block out the screams, the agonizing yells from the men and women starving, the random gunshots echo through the ghetto causing death tolls to elevate. My dearest diary, I no longer have to feed for two, I'm feeding for one. My newborn baby Isaac is my priority. Every day, I hope for death. The guilt for such a wish has always quickly subsided when I hear the hungry cries of my child. The less Jews to feed, the more for my Isaac. Dear diary, the word of a new place for Jews has surfaced, and I hopefully await my destiny. The idea of plentiful feast every day makes my heart fill for my child and my stomach growl for myself. The Nazis that have been generous with their bullets, but unfortunately, they have been selfish with their food. Every day, they bring hope of food and a better life, and every day, our hopes are squashed like a fly on a window. My dearest diary, today is a good day. Today, my Isaac is saved. Our train is here, and the thought of abundant breads and soup and meat cause my mouth to salivate. The Nazis that I have spent ample time hating and praying for their death give me hope. Finally, I feel as if my life and my child belong and filled with happiness. Dear diary, 10 days. It's been 10 days since I've been on flat and moving land. The cattle car is packed and pasted as safe and as entered dangerous. Sweat slowly dripped down my back as I was on the verge of vomiting on the 12 children sitting at my feet. I felt the car come to a stop. The sound of men screaming in German fills my ears and I'm instantly confused. As the doors opened, my heart sinks to my stomach. I see hundreds of thousands of Jews being fouled to the left and the right. They have nothing with them, mere to myself. I hear the terrified shrieks of young children separated from their parents, which triggers my mind to Isaac. His cough, so childlike and quiet, that was barely heard by his own mother, was heard by a German soldier. What is that? Let me see. His words are still being echoed through my mind hours later. I unbutton my shirt to remember my one true love, and I rapidly regret it. My fingertips linger on the rough cloth that hid my bundle as I hand over my child to the Nazi. My eyes fill with tears in the sight of a German throwing my bundle into the air. One gunshot triggers silence and is quickly followed by my own hysterical sobs. I am then kicked to the right. I get yet another day of life, but I've already begun dying. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very touching. Mayor and commissioners, each year in April, as you know, we acknowledge and thank our very valuable citizen volunteers who serve in support of our city operations and our very valuable employee volunteers who volunteer on behalf of the city and the community throughout the year. Last year, more than 500 citizens gave countless hours serving as coaches, serving on city boards, advisory boards, advisory committees, working in many city departments and offices, and with Mayor Dyer's Orlando Cares Initiative. In recognition of their outstanding volunteer efforts in support of our city operations, we have asked them to come today to accept our thanks and to join us in our celebration of civic service. We appreciate these volunteers and all of the others, some of them who couldn't be here today, for all that they've been doing in many programs, and especially last year as we launched Mayor Dyer's Cities of Service Initiative, Orlando Cares, and had many of them to join since our recognition last year. We invite anyone who would like to continue or to get involved with Orlando Cares to visit our website, orlandocares.net, to volunteer in support of one of our six youth initiatives. Our city youth are getting tremendous academic support through Orlando Cares, and we urge everyone to get involved. At this time, I would like to invite our citizen and employee volunteers to come up front so that we can see you all, and Mayor Dyer, if you would please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Marcia. City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas President Barack Obama has designated the month of April as a time to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers throughout our nation, and whereas last year, nearly 65 million Americans gave their time and service to our nation, which is a testament to the compassion and generosity of the American spirit, and whereas the city of Orlando commemorated National Volunteer Month and recognized its valued volunteers at the annual mayor's volunteer appreciation reception on April the 23rd, 2011, and whereas government alone cannot meet all the needs of our nation, so we partner with businesses, faith-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, and individuals to make a difference, and whereas the city of Orlando is committed to encouraging volunteerism, and whereas the city of Orlando is a proud member of the Cities of Service Coalition and is implementing Mayor Dyer's Cities of Service Initiative, Orlando Cares, to engage more residents and partners in impact volunteering that supports youth education and youth crime prevention. Now, therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the month of April 12th as National Volunteer Month in the city of Orlando, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer and put their hearts into volunteerism in their communities throughout the year. Commissioner Ings, note that I let them go before the mayor's update and didn't wait till I was done and then the commissioners were up. Okay, let's move into the mayor's update, and I first want to acknowledge the passing of Alan Jordan, who is Billy Mayne's longtime partner. Billy, our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out to you, okay? I'm also, on a happier note, I'm happy to announce that the city's Dove's Dredgoff course was named the best place to tee off in central Florida by Orlando Sentinel Readers, located in College Park, just minutes from my house and Commissioner Stewart's house. The course features the oldest public layout in central Florida and was originally designed in 1923 and renovated in 2008. It was once the site of the Orlando Golden Open, and players like Sam Snead and Ben Hogan and Commissioner Stewart have graced its links. I like to mention that because when we reopened the course in 2008, Commissioner Stewart and I simultaneously teed off. My drive was in the fairway, his was on the pond in the left. And I looked better. All right, I'll let you think that. It's how you look. Okay. Last week, downtown Orlando was center stage for the World's Downtowns as our Downtown Development Board hosted the 2012 International Downtown Association Spring Conference showcasing our downtown. There were attendees from all over the United States, from Canada, Singapore, the United Kingdom, and Snap moved their 3D visual projection up to coincide with the meeting. So once again, they did a projection on the historic Crest Building that illuminated downtown Orlando's skyline, and Thomas tells me that, or are you Thomas, that all of the participants had wonderful comments about our downtown and were very jealous of what we have going on here. Items of note, let's see, earlier today at workshop, we had a presentation relating to an alternatives analysis for the limo north and south corridors, and on today's agenda, you'll be asked to accept the draft of locally preferred alternatives for those corridors. It's the first step toward getting state and federal funds, and we have no further commitment from the city other than to accept the alternatives. All right, this one's Commissioner Sheehan's. It's hard not to notice the colorfully painted traffic signal boxes when you're driving or walking along the Mills 50 Main Street districts. The traffic boxes became pieces of art as a pilot program between the city and the district last year, and it has been a fantastic success. So we are moving forward with four additional agreements. The Mills 50 will increase their number of boxes in Audubon Park. College Park and downtown south will also be locating boxes within their district. Thank you, Commissioner Sheehan, for your leadership on this project and your leadership in that Main Street district. Today, we are approving a small business facade program agreement with GTC Engineering. Commissioner Ortiz, I believe that's probably in your district, at 98 South Cimarron Boulevard. GTC is using the funds to install a new monument sign, parking pavers and parking signs. The total capital and volunteers, 21,000, and these enhancements are in fact a wonderful addition to the Cimarron Business Partnership Market Street District, Commissioner Ortiz's district, and I want to acknowledge Claude Casanova, who is here with us from GTC today. Claude, thank you for being here and approving the 436 corridor. That's all I have today, commissioners, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, there's a number of items that are acted on by city council through a single vote. We give each of the commissioners an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda or update you briefly on important items from their districts, and we rotate the order that the commissioners go first in, and today, we're on District 4. Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and you know, I think that we hold the public to five minutes in their comments, so I hope that we can exercise the same level of restraint. Thank you very much. On the agenda today, item C4 of the limo study. This is two years of public input, and I really like seeing the routes for preferred alternatives with lots of public input. Ginger, I know that was a tough job sometimes, but I think you did an amazing job with links, and this is just so much a part of that regional transportation network to link with Sun Rail, and I just want to thank both of you for doing such a wonderful job on this and working with the public. I know, you know, sometimes it gets difficult, people get passionate, but I think you all did an amazing job of getting all of that input from both online and from the community meetings, and coming up with a transit system network that really makes sense for limo expansion, so thank you so much for that. On item C8 today, on the Historic Preservation Board minutes, I just wanted to say that while we have teardowns occurring in the historic districts, I would just like to say that Richard Forbes is doing an amazing job on, especially in Lake La Sona Historic District. We've got some non-contributing structures coming down, but I'm looking at the notes from the minutes, and I have to say, he's done such a remarkable job making sure the infill development meets the traditional city development and historic preservation, and I wish we could do more of that throughout the city to make sure that some of these buildings that are being built are in concert rather than distractions from our traditional city neighborhoods. And on item I-7, I'm glad to see the traffic control artwork agreements come forward with FDOT, also to expand Mills 50, but also for Audubon Park, College Park, and downtown south. I see Holly Vanshey here today, and I just want to say imitation, this is serious form of flattery, I'm glad to see that we're expanding this program because it's just street art, basically, but it's art that everyone can enjoy, and the artists that do this kind of work are so excited about being able to do that in a public fashion, and it's not something that they're getting rich on by any means, but it just really has added a lot to Mills 50, and I'm glad to see this moving throughout the city. And I also was on I Drive over the weekend, International Drive, and noticed they have been doing that out there as well, so apparently, it's really catching on. That's all I have, Mayor, in the interest of brevity, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 5. Commissioner Lyneum.
Thank you, and just a few announcements, not too much on the agenda, we've already gone through that, but my girls have left, that was Jan and Jody. Regarding Volunteer Month, I don't know, Marcia left with them, I guess she did. I like to, when we're working together, call it girls rule, because last Saturday, and I was very fortunate I could be there, because my bicycle savvy class was canceled on Saturday to tour Orlando by bicycle and learn the safety pieces for that, but the ladies pulled together hundreds of volunteers to go into the Willows and do our annual, almost annual cleanup and greenup. That has literally been a lifeline to that neighborhood. When it's teetering on going one way or the other, we have been able for 14 years to keep that neighborhood locked solid, clean as much as possible, and refreshed with shrubbery, and Jan Rahill and Jody have been just wonderful, wonderful volunteers in pulling people together. JetBlue, the neighborhood had a huge art working group. Of course, you always see people sitting down while you're working, but my favorite thing to do is always working outside, especially when it's overcast and the sun is announced. I want to say a real special thank you to them and to the Miracle Tabernacle Church that is always our headquarters and the work that we're doing there. Most people who know the Willows know that's really, really critical. I mentioned my bicycle savvy class was canceled because Commissioner Pennington challenged me. I did take the classroom part of the class, I just haven't done the technical part, but I have. I have been to bicycle with OPD before, but I was called the worst police officer on the bicycle, and I still have my little helmet that you wear that says "Police," so I'm like, oh, Lord. Maybe I'll get called out again, chief, I don't know, but I'd like the idea that all of us to bicycle and walk around Orlando. And then, of course, we had the retirement of Dr. Trudy Kiwi Reed at Bethune-Cookman, and I was able to go over and talk with her and some of the trustees that are taking over, because the Florida Classic is very important to Orlando. When you bring 100,000 people in, that is a great economic impact, so we just want to make sure there is continuity and people willing to work with us, and Steve Hogan, who is a great, great, great person to work to work with and saving Orlando through the Florida Classic, is just a phenomenal guy and believe it or not, Mayor, he escorted Trudy in. He was one of the boys there, I mean, he was looking good all dressed up, too. So, I want to say a real special thanks that we're going to move on, keep that Florida Classic here. And in addition, just before leaving for Daytona, we were able to go to the Youth Crime Summit over at the South Side Church of Christ, whose pastor, Pastor Leonard, is on the statewide Human Relations Board and it called in a lot of law enforcement, judges and et cetera to talk about how we can deal with the disproportionate number of youngsters getting in trouble and resolutions. And one of the resolutions I talked about, Mayor, was that we do here and that's making sure we have equity in terms of contracts and jobs. People do better when they know better and when they have more. So, we're really looking this summer for youth employment and I was very surprised when our lobbyists, was it our lobbyists that said that, or maybe it was Metro Plan, talked about jobs for this summer. So, and the fact that Harvard, I can make this announcement, really is looking for some of these students at the disadvantaged schools to make application if they have a high enough grade point average. So, we're going to really see can we push Jones High School students to get focused on going to Harvard University. I think then this week, I think tomorrow night, Cabares, Bishop Cabares, is hosting a voter suppression meeting, I believe it's at Evans High School, I'm not certain, at 6:30, and then he will have another toward the end of this month. We really want people to be aware of how they can vote and turnout to vote. A dismal, low turnout just isn't going to work, but we've got to help educate people and I appreciate the bishop for taking care of that. And I do want to congratulate Sonny and Kevin on their 30 years and the fact that they're not giving up yet. That is great. Solid Waste has done so much in creativity and moving our agendas forward and they've done it for my 14 years here of doing unique things in Paramore and across the community. So, I want to say a real special thanks. And Chief, I appreciate those 39 new radios we're getting for OPD and of course, I like cold case files. I just think we ought to be on TV doing our cases once we get them solved. I think, you know, we can get Eddie to set up the TV thing and we can take this show on the road, huh? Okay? But other than that, Mayor, that's about it and I too want to express my sympathy to Billy and his partner and staff. It's always hard when we lose one of our loved ones. God bless you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Aings.
Thank you, Mayor. Item, getting right into the agenda, item B4, congratulations, Rebecca Sutton and also Ray Elwell in the Office of Business and Financial Services. This is in reference to our accepting the City of Orlando 2011 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. You guys do a great job as always and then, of course, Orlando is celebrating receiving the Certificate of Achievement and we couldn't have done it without you guys for 33 consecutive years, so that's a great honor. And Orlando is, Mayor Dyer, city government you can depend on. That sounds like a good commercial, too.
Sounds like a commercial.
Item C4, FJ Flynn and Ginger and Alan, thank you so very much, reference to the locally preferred alternatives of the north and south Bus Rapid, excuse me, transit corridors. You guys have been doing a great job and I know you're still continuing because you're the ones that's going to help us find the money, too. So, thank you so very much for your help in that area. And then, of course, Chief Rooney, thank you so very much for H4, the application that you guys have put in for the 2012 solving cold cases and DNA grant. Last year, you were able to solve two homicides with the grant and also three sexual batteries. So, this was really great and these are some real serious crimes and for them to go solve now means that the City of Orlando has really done a lot to help protect its citizens. So, you guys would be commended for a great job there. And then, also into the activities within the district, this past Wednesday, April the 11th, I spoke at the Women's Executive Council Luncheon at the University Club on Central Boulevard. Mayor, I was trying to get you to come to that, but you had another scheduling conflict. Barbara Bergstrom is the program chair for that event. They, the ladies would have been surprised to have seen you there and I did mention that to them, so they do send, you know, their regards to you. But Barbara Bergstrom was the program chair and Diane Snyder is the president of the organization. This is a group of women, businesswomen, and they represent Orlando. They've been in existence for several years, now I think since 1970 or '72. So, this is a great organization that we have right here in downtown and they do get involved in our communities and do a lot there. Then also on Friday, April 13th, I attended the Ramada Plaza Resorts and Suites at 6550 International Drive in Orlando. They had their grand opening. They actually built a new tower there at their hotel and this was a great event. I'm going to talk more about this event later, but I really wanted you to know that we do have some more economic development that's taking place in District 6 and this was a powerful piece, so we'll talk more about that. And then this past Saturday, I sponsored a financial literacy workshop and this was in conjunction with three organizations, the National Council of Negro Women, the National Association of Black Accountants and the Central Florida Urban League Young Professionals. They actually formed an alliance to host this National Financial Literacy Month Workshop at the Dr. James R. Smith Center and the financial workshop was free and open to the public. We did have many people to attend. They came from different areas throughout the city. A lot of the information was through word of mouth, so it was great attendance. They enjoyed the conversations that took place. The topics included understanding your credit, budgeting, savings and insurance and as I stated before, great audience participations, admitting questions were asked. And then also State Farm Insurance, E-Vet Register, a local businessperson, was on hand to be one of the speakers. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Linda Howard, who works for Orlando Utilities as an accountant, Ayesha Sharp, Alicia Taylor, Aaron Harding, Oriole Ross, Jay Hutchinson, for their great work in helping to put this event together. And also Costco for the refreshments that you supplied for breakfast. And then also on that same day, Saturday, April 21st, NBC Universal Comcast Care Day was held at Ecclestone Elementary School. Mayor Dyer, we know you were at your son's championship game that got moved up, but it was a great event. Over 250 volunteers were there, including children and teachers, the principal, Tracy Webly was there on hand along with Felicia Goodman, the assistant principal. But the significance of this was that Comcast Care Day was being held throughout the United States in over 650 different locations. So, they were doing that throughout the United States. David Cohen, the executive VP for Comcast Corporation, was there on hand. He flew in from Miami. They started their program in Miami early on. Then Tom Williams, chairman and CEO of Universal Parks and Resorts, John Spruels, executive VP, Universal Parks and Resorts, Bill Davis, the president and COO of Universal Orlando Resort, and the Golf Channel President, Mike McCarley, he was on hand, Bill Sablet, chairman of Orange County Public School Board, as well as our Senator Gary Siplin. So, this was a great event. They really went in and did some paint up, spruce up and cleanup for Ecclestone Elementary School. They actually built a beautiful garden and this was a butterfly garden. They started off on raw land, they brought in plants and once they finished the garden and we gathered all around, they gave us live butterflies, which we released and the butterflies flew right into the garden to feed on the plants. So, this was a great event. Then also on Saturday night was the Haitian consulate of Haiti in Orlando presented its Unity and Diversity Day and it was held at the End Time Sabbath Worship Center at 2150 Bringle Avenue in Orlando. Regina McGill was also on hand. He came early representing you, Mayor, and your office there. And thank you, Reggie, for your support in that particular area. We did have the foreign minister from Haiti that was there and that's Laurent Lamont and he's been recently nominated as the prime minister of Haiti, so he's waiting confirmation. There were several senators from Haiti there at this event and the consul member, Alex Jespiter, was there on hand with the people here. He is a new consul here in Orlando representing the consulate of Haiti. So, this was a great event. Many people were there and I did bring greetings, Mayor, on behalf of you and the city council. So, this was a great event. They really appreciated the City of Orlando and all that we do for them and that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 1. Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I would also like to express my condolences to you, Billy, as well, and our thoughts and prayers are with you. I also wanted to congratulate again Chelsea Price, who read that very nice, that very nice reading. And just looking around the audience as she was reading it, it was impressive because I saw a couple of people dabbing their eyes and it's impressive to see such talent and such meaning. And it's probably very appropriate that someone who writes something like that would go to a high school called Freedom High School and I really appreciate her sharing that and wish her all the best in her future. Also wanted to add my congratulations to the 30-year employees and Charlie Wade. I really enjoyed hearing about their careers and want to also thank Public Works since they operate the Solid Waste Department and they also have an item that I wanted to comment on, the Orlando Wetlands Park. I was at the park last weekend. It looks great, so encourage everybody from this community to go out there and visit. I think it's open until November and then it closes for a few months and encourage everybody to get out there and see it. Around the district, we, the North Lake Park rezoning meeting that the school board is handling is going to be May 8th at the school board headquarters. That's to deal with the crowding issue at North Lake Park Elementary and talk about the proposed solutions to deal with that. I believe it's 5:30 on May 8th. Speaking of schools, my congratulations to all the students that took the FCAT tests over the past week. I wish them all the best of luck. And I want to thank code enforcement and the police for their continuing efforts in the Brenmore neighborhood with a home that unfortunately needs a lot of attention from code enforcement and the police department, but thank them for all their, all their good work. On the agenda, just a couple of comments. First of all, item A1, I'm going to vote no, just because I feel like we ought to have, or the city ought to have more meetings that are more accessible to the community. I7, I want to compliment that. I think that's a nice project as far as the artwork on the traffic control boxes. I think it's a great way for people to get more involved with the community. I think it adds a lot. I think it just looks good and I'm glad to see that moving on. Also want to compliment the police department. It seems like every meeting, there are a number of items where they go out and get grants to do good things around the community and whether it's efforts to fight drug trafficking, to purchase more radios or to work on cold unsolved cases. It seems like it's every meeting and it's typically very good things, so congratulations to them. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Move to District 2. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Billy, my condolences, our prayers are with you. I'd like to take this opportunity to also congratulate a group of residents from Ventura Country Club. They just graduated from their CERT program over there. They're really enthusiastic and I like that because they're getting more and more involved as every day goes by. Last Friday, in celebration of yesterday's Earth Day, I attended the Earth Web Foundation Annual Banquet right here at City Hall on the ninth floor. It was a great event. I wanted to congratulate Dr. Oswald Svetra and his assistant, Julia, his family and everybody who was involved. This is something that creates conscience about our earth and the needs that we have to conserve. This Saturday was a busy weekend for District 2 team. My aide Anna Cruz and our liaison officer, Eddie Rosado, attended the first Anglerwood Park Neighborhood Association dog walk. That was exciting and I was sorry I couldn't be there. I had another event down in Miami, but I heard it was a total success, so I want to congratulate the president of the association, Mr. Lynn Hill and Ms. Deborah Alstott for a successful event. Also on Saturday was the Azalea Park Relay for Life at the Jackson Middle School and I want to congratulate and thank my fellow commissioner, Robert Stewart, who came and helped me out and he represent, he present us as commissioners in this particular event. It was a very successful event and even though the weather was not very helpful, they took it inside and they still had a lot of fun and were able to collect plenty of money. It's my understanding that up to this point, they have collected close to $11,000 and they're still coming. So, my congratulations to Principal Eddie Ruiz and his staff for a great event. And by all means, my aide Anna Cruz, who loves to get involved in these On item C7, congratulations, Mr. Claude Casanova. I really appreciate your efforts and your participation and what you're doing in our district. By all means, we're going to turn our district upside down and we'll be an example to the other districts in the city. That's healthy competition there. I also want to congratulate the police department on item H2, I believe it is, yes, getting the grant, approving the grant for HIDA. So, I am so proud and I'm ever so proud of telling other departments, not only around the nation, but back in Puerto Rico, how we conduct business and you guys are a, an example to everybody. So, thank you so much. This past weekend, I went to Expo Colombia down at Miami Airport, the Miami Airport Convention Center and I believe mid-May, we're going to be, it's going to take effect, the FTA and the Free Trade Agreement and we are already moving towards opening communication with Colombia and Brazil and other areas in South America. But there was a, there was a great expo this weekend down at Miami and I had the chance, the honor and the opportunity to meet two great governors, Governor Guido Echeverry from the state of Caldas, or as they call it, Department of Caldas, and Mrs. Sandra Paola Hurtado Palacio, Governor of Quindío. And the enthusiasm and the motivation these governors have to contribute and collaborate with the central Florida region and starting to promote businesses around here is great and I believe we need to take advantage of this. They have great opportunities. As a matter of fact, the state of Caldas has one of the greatest mines of gold all around the world. They have, is another, is a, is a region where there's a lot of coffee, of course, a production of coffee, but they also have rocks, stones and all kinds. The mining business over there is great. So, I believe there's a lot for us to participate in and there's, they also are interested in exchanging ideas from the government standpoint and cultural aspects. So, I believe this is a great opportunity for our business people here in the central Florida region and for our community to get involved and expand our horizons. Florida region and for our community to get involved and expand our horizons. So with that being said, I'm really looking forward to this collaboration between our governments, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 3. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and Billy, like all of us, our condolences. It's a difficult time, and you know our prayers are with you. Couple of things I'd like to just share. The Isaiah Park Relay for Life, I had the honor of representing Commissioner Ortiz, had a great time. I want to say a special thanks to Anna Cruz. I hope she's listening. It was just really great to work with her out there. She was a wonderful representative for our city, but most importantly, she just handled everything very well, and I appreciate that. Of course, Audra and the principal at Stonewall Jackson did a great job, and they moved that entire event in within 12 hours, did a whole new brochure, a whole new thing. They just did a great, great job, and everybody had a smile on their face, having a lot of fun, so they, to be rewarded for what they've accomplished. I want to say a special thank you to Officer Day, the school resource officer at Glen Ridge Middle School, for his work in helping secure some grants for the building of a new bike corral that's over at the school. They're going to help promote bicycle safety, and we're going to be doing Bike to School Day over there soon, so I appreciate what Officer Day has done and how he's accomplished that so far. Tomorrow night at the Ivanhoe Village Business Mixer, the Comfort Ends, at Comfort Ends Suites on Orange Avenue at 5:30. If you're a business or a resident in the area and you want to know a little bit more about what Sunrail's doing, how we're going to affect that area over there, please come over and join us. That's Comfort Ends Suites on Orange Avenue. For information, you can go through the Ivanhoe Village Business Mixer. This weekend is the College Park Relay for Life. We're looking forward to another great event. We did one last year. We've moved it over to the track, and we're excited about the response we've had so far. So please come out and join us this Saturday evening and Sunday morning. This, also this weekend, is the Edgewater High School Hall of Fame Awards. Special congratulations to Byron Brooks and the other six recipients there. I have the honor, I mentioned earlier, that my brother Jacob and brother George also will be put in there, and my old basketball coach, my old friend of mine who coached Little League baseball, the old George Stewart Little League, is going to be inducted, and as well some other good friends of mine. So it's going to be a wonderful Saturday evening, so congratulations, Byron, and thank you for representing our city and Edgewater High School with such honor. On May 5th is the Dancing in the Streets. I was required by, if I didn't, somebody was going to yell at me before I left here to mention this. Dancing in the Streets on May 5th. I noticed that on the agenda today, there's probably about 30, 30 things going on on Sanco de Mayo. Here's another one in the College Park area. That same evening, come down, enjoy an opportunity just to dance in the streets and just kind of dance your shoes off. If you'd like to reserve a table, please contact collegeparkpartnership.com. If you need more information, you can always contact my office. I'll be glad to help you out. It goes from 6:00 to 10:00 on Saturday night. I'm sorry, Alan, I'm sorry. Yes, Saturday night, May 5th. Is that right? Saturday night, May 5th. And also I want to say a special congratulations again to Kevin and Sonny. Appreciate their work with the city. I've never had anything but compliments. They've been overly responsive to every time there's been an issue, and it's just great to work with great people like that. Two items I want to mention on the agenda before I kind of conclude. One is the traffic control boxes. Thank you, Commissioner Sheehan, for what you've done. You had some wonderful compliments already over there on the edge of our districts in District 3, and I appreciate that work. I think it's going to be a great addition to our community, and I think it's another part of our community building that we can be a part of. There, of course, on C4, the limo preferred routes. Gender, thank you. Thank you very much for the work you've done. Alan, thank you for what you have done, and of course, FJ and our staff. As I mentioned earlier, we had a wonderful response from the community, and that is a direct result of the work that you all have done, and it's your devotion to make sure that we do what the community wants done, and we appreciate that. I think it's a great compliment to your work, but I also think it also gives a good sense of direction for where we can go as a community. Oftentimes, our constituents are a little bit confused when you start planning, they think we've got the money, so now we've got to go raise the money, but we can't do that without having the proper plan, and I appreciate what you all have done. And that's all that I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Or motion to approve the contention?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. I was remiss in not congratulating Byron as well on his induction into the Edgewater Hall of Fame. It's nice that at least one inductee is not related to Commissioner Stewart by blood. At least I don't think so.
Yeah, we don't know.
He keeps telling me that everybody has to have a connection to him. It's either his brother, the people he coached with, the people that coached him, the CEO of the city, I don't know.
You've been around 60 years, you have a couple of contacts.
Yeah. Chief, one other thing. Would you come up and just report on the apprehension of the three individuals that you talked about at the lunch meeting today?
Yeah, good job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, city commissioners? Well, I have some good news. As most of you have heard, we had a rash of burglaries, residential burglaries, from three very bold suspects. They were kicking in the front doors of residents in College Park, Delaney Park, and also Winter Park, and stealing whatever they can get their hands on. Checkbooks, jewelry, cash, TVs, and we, the other night, we pursued this vehicle. We had some pretty good information from the community, a good description of the vehicle, and we pursued it all the way down to Osceola County. They bailed out, and we were able to apprehend all three. What's kind of interesting is even though we pursued from Orlando all the way down to Osceola County, one of the subjects, who's a career criminal, convicted felon, was still armed with a handgun in his waistband. And just, again, interesting about some of these three and how dangerous they were. One had 13 felony arrests, 10 misdemeanor arrests. Another one had 55 felony arrests, 35 misdemeanor arrests, and the third subject, who was armed with the handgun, had 29 felony arrests, 16 misdemeanor arrests. So they're very bad individuals. Hopefully, we will be able to keep them behind bars for quite a while.
Good police work, Chief, although I got to tell you, it makes you wonder when you read out the stats on how many felony arrests they've had, what they were doing on the street in the first place.
Scary, very scary.
And your admonition to those in those affected neighborhoods is to stay vigilant.
Still, exactly, always. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, I'm going to skip the CRA meeting just for now because we need to do the public, the city council public hearing related to the bonds from the CRA before we take it up on the CRA, so. Madam Clark, why don't you just read the title of the hearing for me?
A resolution. I'm sorry?
Hearing number one.
Yes, sir. A resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida approving the issuance by the City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency of the not-to-exceed $27 million City of Orlando, Florida Community Redevelopment Agency Tax Increment Revenue Refunding Bonds, Conroy Road District, Series 2012, to refund and redeem the outstanding City of Orlando, Florida Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Conroy Road Interchange Project, Series 1998A, approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust with respect to such bonds, authorizing the release of the special assessment lien created under the indenture of trust relating to the Series 1998A bonds, providing certain other authorizations, providing per severability, and providing an effective date.
Motion. Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. So we will open a public hearing concerning the proposed adoption of a resolution as just described by the city clerk. I want to call on Chris McCully, the city's treasurer, to summarize the bond transaction, and there he is, right and ready.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The item before you today is a public hearing, an adoption of a resolution authorizing the CRA to issue its Series 2012 Tax Increment Bonds for the Conroy Road District. Just want to give you a quick background on the district. This is a district that was established in 1991 to address transportation deficiencies in the area around I-4 and what was soon to be the Mall of Millenia. The district receives tax increment revenues from the city in Orange County, and those revenues are used to pay the debt service on the city's 1998A bonds, which financed the construction of the interchange at I-4 and Conroy Road. Under the 1997 interlocal agreement between the city, the CRA, and Orange County, tax increment funds are used for debt service, and anything left over after we pay the debt service gets rebated back to the city and the county general funds. This district is separate and distinct from any other CRA district, and this refunding does not impact the downtown CRA in any way. If you can see this on your screens, the map on the left shows all the CRA districts in the city. The Conroy Road District is the one sort of in the middle in red. On the right side of your screen, it's a close-up of the map, and it's, you can see that it's centered over the area of Mall of Millenia and the surrounding development. The purpose of the 2012 CRA bonds is to refund the $22 million of outstanding Series 1998 Conroy Road Special Assessment Bonds, which were initially issued, again, as I said, to finance the interchange at I-4 and Conroy Road. Municipal interest rates are at historic lows right now, which, if we do this refunding today, would allow us to save on the debt service cost of the 98A bonds, which ultimately will result in greater rebates back to the city and the county general funds from this district. The repayment source of the bonds will be tax increment revenues from this Conroy Road CRA district. They'll be issued with fixed interest rates. With today's interest rates, we expect savings of about $4.7 million over the life of the bonds. And again, since tax, since excess tax increment is rebated back to the city and the county, that's $4.7 million of additional revenue that will come back to the city and the county over the life of the bonds. So today's staff is requesting that you hold this public hearing and adopt the resolution authorizing the CRA's issuance of the Series 2012 Conroy Road Bonds. After adoption of the city's resolution, you as a CRA will also adopt a resolution under the CRA authorizing the issuance of the bonds. Just for the record, pursuant to Florida statutes, notice taxing authorities were mailed on April 5th, and this hearing was advertised in the Orlando Sentinel on April 9th. After you take public comment, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Well, any questions for Chris at this point? Then I'll open it up for public testimony. Anybody that, anybody turned in a card, Madam Clark?
No.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Rather than do the other hearing, why don't we reassess the city council meeting, convene the CRA meeting, without objection. The only matter before us is the adoption of the same resolution that the city council just adopted. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart. We don't need public testimony on this. Okay. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Is there any further business coming forward to CRA? Thomas, wherever you are? Okay, then we will re, or we'll adjourn the CRA meeting and reconvene the city council meeting, and we are on hearings number two, Madam Clark, so why don't you just go ahead and read that?
A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Orlando pursuant to the provisions of Section 55.16 Sub 2 of Chapter 55 of the Code of the City of Orlando to establish a taxi cab rate increase.
No move. Motion by Commissioner Eng, second by Commissioner Lyman. Do we have any cards, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to testify on this matter? Oh, were you going to give us a little presentation?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to explain the requirements of Chapter 5516.
Okay.
Establishing the taxi meter rates.
Move a little bit closer to the mic.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Chapter 5516, which establishes the taxi cab meter rates. We conducted a public hearing to determine the percentage of change in the Consumer Price Index, and based on those rates, it's well over the 6% as the ordinance states, so staff of the vehicles for hire unit is requesting an exact 9.09% increase, which would bring the meter rate up to the 240 at the, you know, meter rates, and then the drop rate of 240 and 82ths of 60 cents.
Okay, so it's a formula modification.
Yes, sir.
Based on formula. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Hearing none, or is there discussion among Commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Warners, first reading, Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Randy Suggs Landscaping Inc., a non-exclusive franchise, to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Eng, second by Commissioner Sheehan.
Anyone like to testify on the roll-off franchise? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the motion carries. So that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council today. Thank you for tuning in at home. Thank you for joining us here in council chambers. We have no general appearances, so we are adjourned.